All right, we have six o'clock. So we will call the Wabash City School Board meeting. Actually, we will take roll call for the school board meeting for Monday. Everyone here, we have a quorum, so we'll call the meeting to order. Will everybody please stand and join on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We begin each Wabash City School Board meeting by reiterating the school's mission. Wabash City Schools provides a relevant and rigorous education founded upon relationships to ensure each student is college and career ready for success in the public community. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight and everybody that's joining us online. Do we have any recognitions tonight?
Yes, we do. Tonight, we have our high school girls golf team here. They were regional qualifiers. So we will have their coach, Mr. Burns, introduce these young ladies.
I'm gonna introduce them in order to do matches. Because that's fun, these girls will come up and stand over here. I think that'd be great. So, in the number one position, sophomore, Kimmy McWhorter. Number two, senior, Aubrey Gil. Number three, sophomore, Hannah Adams. Number four, sophomore, Sid "The Kid" Hill. Number five, freshman, Julia "Jacy" Two Gloves Stevens. And sixth place, Haley Ingraham. It's okay, I'd like to recap the season a bit. We had a short season by time, but we did nineteen matches this year. We had no cancellations. We didn't have to do nineteen, but we went to regionals, so that was exciting. We beat everybody in the county. Northfield beat us once at sectionals. They had a great, great match for their one and two, and that was the only time they beat us all season. So as far as Wabash County goes, we do have the best golf team, I would say, since we beat them repeatedly. We scored the best at regionals. So Kimmy was the lowest-scoring Wabash County girls golfer at the Noble Hawk Regional with an eighty-eight. Do I remember that correctly? Which is a phenomenal school on that golf course. We won our own meet, so it was kind of a surprise that day. We didn't know we were the best at our own meet until we won it. And the scores came in, and we had every single player on the team improve their average throughout the year. And I think my favorite was probably Sidney. At one point, he goes, "I think I'm getting worse." "I've gotten the numbers, kiddo, if you're not getting worse, it's okay." And so through those nineteen matches, some weeks we had four matches in a week. And so it was kind of a hectic, crazy schedule. So the truth is, even though our season starts in August, these girls play in the summer. They go play in leagues in the summer, they're out regularly in the summer, and that's what it takes to be successful. We do have a young team. We're losing operating. We feel like a little bit of the team mom's going. So Coach Burns is gonna have to be responsible next year. Because she's been taking a lot of that from me. But it was really great for her to have her second competitive qualifying for regionals in a row and end on a great note. So.
We do have a couple of revisions to the agenda. Under item C two and then G twenty-nine thirty-one, and then H and I. So let me see if I can get down to them and read them. So C two is accept the resignation of Rita Scholes as RISE Fair Professional at OJ Neighbors Detective Office Number Seven. G twenty-nine through thirty-one is approve the following for athletics. Wabash Middle School, Wabash High School softball volunteer, Montana Castro. Boys' seventh grade basketball, Jeff Maslin. Elementary basketball, Jared McKee, Josh Long, Tyler Leland. And then items H, approve recommendation to adopt the following: Twenty-twenty-three bus replacement plan, twenty-twenty-three capital projects plan. And then I, WHS, Student Council Presentation. Yes, I could do that next, but I will accept a motion on the revisions to the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Do we have any discussion on the revisions? Are all those in favor of approving the revisions indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. The consent agenda. We have minutes from our September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two meeting. Claims, we have a donation of a hundred and sixty-one dollars and thirty-five cents from Grant Blackford Mental Health to pay for tuition for the month of August for an LH Carpenter student. And we do not have financials of this meeting. So I would accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
Oh, we appreciate the donation from Grant Blackford Mental Health to pay for the month of August for our LH students.
All those in favor of approving the consent agenda indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Next regular scheduled board meeting will be Monday, October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two, at Wabash Middle School Cafeteria, one fifty Col rain Street, Wabash, Indiana, at six P M. With a few items of communication. This point, is there any items on the agenda that anyone from the audience would like to comment on? All right, hearing none. We will... Let's do the public meeting of Wabash City Schools regarding the tentative agreement with the Teachers Association. I would accept a motion to call the meeting, to open the meeting.
Salute. Second.
Public meeting of Wabash City Schools, October tenth, twenty-twenty-two, six P M. Wabash Middle School Cafeteria, one fifty Col rain Street, Wabash, Indiana. School Board will need to discuss the terms of tentative agreement of the teacher collective bargaining agreement, which is posted at www.apaches.k12.in.us. Is the meeting open? We will accept discussion.
Tonight, we present the tentative agreement between Wabash City Schools and the Wabash Teachers Association. We are able to provide a decent raise for our teachers. Ranges, our raises ranged between one point five percent and seven point three percent. Teachers that were making below forty thousand had to be brought up to forty thousand. That was a state law. These teachers' raises were between five and a half and seven point three percent. We did create a new compensation model that includes a component to retain qualified teachers. We know that in this day and age, finding qualified teachers is difficult. So we want to make sure that the ones that we have, we keep them. This falls into the category of academic need. And this component allows us to catch up teachers that have been teaching between one and twenty years, but their salary does not reflect the increases one would hope to have seen during those years. Overall, we, I calculated today that if you look at our new monies from the basic grant and the monies that we saved by not replacing teachers from last year or replacing them and saving some money on salaries, we used fifty-five percent of those monies towards teacher raises. This is a two-year contract, and next year, they will get forty-five percent. That is the state law that we have to put forty-five percent of our education fund towards teacher raises. So I will also ask Mr. Stone if there's anything that he would like to add.
We also, earlier, before, the contract had agreed to continue our paying seventy percent health insurance plans one, Plan One, and we did that in the contract for next year also. So there is a stipulation in the contract that we'll pick up seventy percent of any insurance increase for next year, since we are doing a two-year agreement.
Any questions from the board? Since it is a public meeting, any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none. At this point, we need to approve?
No, the approval is Friday at the special meeting.
That's right. So hearing no further comments at this point, I accept a motion to close the public meeting.
Salute. Second.
All those in favor of closing the meeting indicate by saying aye? Aye. We need to close. There's no old business, new business. Actually, we will do the high school student council first.
Okay, so we're here to talk about the events that have happened in September for Wabash High School, and there's been quite a few, so let's get into it. So this past, I think it was two weeks ago, we had homecoming. And these are some photos of the hallways from each grade that we decorated. And juniors came in first in our competition, seniors came in second, sophomores came in third, and freshmen placed fourth. And the whole week, we are competing between, you get points for hallway decorating, you get points for float decorating, dress up, how many people in your grade dressed up, and you also get points for the activity that we hold during lunch and advisory. This year, we had a lot of fun during our activity days during advisory, because we were actually able to do some contact sports and not have to worry about COVID and just kind of get back to normal. And so Monday this year was Jersey Day. Tuesday, we had Country versus the Country Club. Wednesday was Holiday. Thursday was Throwback Thursday. Friday was Orange Box Apache Spirit Day. And then this year, for activities, we were able to play knockout. Tuesday was kickball. Wednesday, we played medic ball, which is a dodgeball game. And then... So ring toss. So yes, we had a lot of fun and a lot of people dressed up throughout the week, and we just had a lot of fun celebrating Wabash.
So the Friday of the homecoming game, we got to have a pep rally to recognize sports and activities for the entire year. So we did one and done, no more. We had the homecoming court down and play some games. So the girls did a game with bubble tape. They let it roll and see who could get it up with no hands first. Libby Mattern was our winner, I believe. The guys did the Sprite Challenge. They had a can of Sprite and had to see who could chug it first. They had to tip it upside down. Sun Ho was the winner of that one. Megan Long, the cheer coach, did give the football seniors to do a challenge with the school song. So we got serenaded by Isaiah Cavins. And the dance team and cheer teams all performed for us. And then the night of the game, we had the courts sitting along the sidelines. We played Northfield. Unfortunately, we did not mount on pop that game. But we did at halftime, crown our king, Antonio, and our queen, Amanda. Here's just the court, all dressed up. Very beautiful, very put together.
So now we get into Harvest Ball. We hold Harvest Ball, well, at least we try to, every year. This year, it fell on the first Saturday of October. Our theme was the Enchanted Forest, so we had a bunch of greenery and fairy lights, and it was very pretty, and we got to decorate the high school gym. The playlist was made by Maddie Von Newell and Isaac Wright. And then we had Mr. Mendark as our DJ. Our attendance was around two hundred people, and everyone seemed to enjoy it. So it was a great way to bring in and get some fun and dress all pretty and nice for a little while.
Last week, we had College Go Week, so throughout the week, the office would ask questions related to colleges in Indiana. And seniors and later on in the week, juniors and sophomores, were able to answer questions for prizes such as college T-shirts, a mini cup of college merch, and stickers, chapstick cups, all of the above. A lot of seniors also applied to colleges. We had many workdays that week, and a lot of students were able to apply to colleges and get accepted. And we also advisories decorated doors to show this spirit for college go. So our upcoming plans, tomorrow, we actually have a student council meeting to discuss our fish food drive, which is coming up in the first week of November. The WHS blood drive is also coming up, which is led by SAB. And fall sports are coming to an end, which means winter's blowers will soon restart. And that's all we have till before, too. And we have a hundred and forty-six days left. Thank you for letting us through.
Thank you, girls.
Now, with your report on fall NWEA scores by Dr. Sealy.
Okay, so our testing window for NWEA was September twelfth to the twenty-third. We do test pre-K through twelve. Today, I am only presenting the pre-K through eighth grade. High school data is by classes, and so it might be by algebra and geometry, Algebra II. So it's very hard to look at grade level data when you have tests that are by a class and not by a grade. So this is just some information, some key terms about NWEA. NWEA is a research-based, not-for-profit organization that supports student and educators worldwide by creating assessment solutions that precisely measure growth and proficiency. When we are presenting the scores today, we are presenting what's called a RIT score. And that is called their Ready for Instruction Today score. And a RIT score can be between one hundred and three fifty and expands all grade levels. So you can have a fourth grader that scores a two twenty-five in math, and you can have an eighth grader that scores a two twenty-five in math. And that tells you that that fourth grader is very advanced, because they are scoring eighth grade above two twenty-five is what you would expect an average eighth grader to be. So it's not grade-specific, it's just the whole continuum. We are also gonna look at norm grade level mean scores. And so when we look at this, this is, NWEA puts together, every so many years, they reevaluate, and they give you the norm scores. And so that is the score that a student at the fiftieth percentile would have at that grade level. And that's really what our administrators are striving for. We want our students to be at the fiftieth percentile or higher. So when we look at our math scores, the first column shows our scores from the fall of twenty-twenty-one. So last year was the first year that we administered this. The second column shows our mean RIT scores for this fall. So if you go across and you look at kindergarten last year compared to kindergarten this year, you can see that we did go up a little bit. But you're not really comparing apples to apples when you do it that way, because the kindergarten group this year is different than the kindergarten group from last year. So what I have done is highlighted the cohort groups. So you can see, our kindergarteners last year had a one forty-eight point three, and this year, I'm sorry, I don't have my readers on, I can barely read that, is a one sixty-six point five. And when you look at that norm grade level, you can see that our first graders last year were above that norm grade level, and our first graders this year have gone above that norm, and they're even higher. So that's a good thing. So the ones that are highlighted in green are the grade levels that are performing on average higher than that norm RIT score. The ones in yellow are the ones where we're not quite there yet. But when I looked at this, the thing that I was most excited about was that each cohort really is showing growth. We did have a couple, no, maybe not in this, it was in reading. So every single cohort, when they went from the fall of last year to the fall of this year, has seen some really good growth, and that's what we really need to be focusing on. When you look at reading, same thing. We are seeing some growth. Now, we do see when we get into... No, all of them showed growth from grade level to grade level. But we're seeing a few more that were not reading, not meeting that norm mean RIT score. So these are some things that, like I said, some things to celebrate. Our cohorts are growing, and we can use this data. In fact, a lot of our schools are already using this data, and I will share a little bit about that when we get to the end. The next set of data is our students at LH. And the pre-K data really is just baseline data, because we don't have any previous data for them. So I've just given that to you, so you can see, when they come in in the fall, when it comes to decoding, they come in, they expect them to be at that L zero level. They say there's no expectation for them to be able to do that. But you can see thirty-four percent of our kids have come in for phonological awareness exceeding expectations. For phonics and word recognition, we have twenty-four percent. When you move over to language comprehension, we have quite a few that are meets or exceeds grade levels coming in. So kudos to our parents who are reading to our students. Those are the types of things that made a difference in these pre-K scores. When we look at our kindergarten, what I did was I pulled their scores as pre-K. Now, some of these students, it may not be the same students, because we have students that did not attend our preschool that came into kindergarten. But saw some really great things here as well. The, when they move into kindergarten, L zero is considered approaching. L one, level one, is where we want them to be. So you can see that for reading fluency, we have eighty-three percent of our kids that are at or exceeding expectations. For phonics and word recognition, we have fifty-one percent. When you look over at the language comprehension, we have quite a few, eighty-six percent that... I don't even know if I can read this at all, that are meets or exceeds for listening comprehension, and ninety-two percent that are at meets or exceeds. This, I just think, is, it shows that when they come to preschool with us, we are really setting them up to be successful in kindergarten. So using this data, LH and OJ utilizes this to determine which students receive title warrant intervention in both reading and math. OJ is also using the data to provide Apache time, which will allow for reteaching and enrichment, which is during the school day. The middle school uses this to do spiral review and reteaching in math and language arts. And in all of our buildings, teachers can use this to do small group instruction. It helps them understand what students I should put together when I'm working in small groups. I also know at OJ, they are doing student data sheets, and this data is just one component that students will be tracking and setting goals for improvement. We also have four classrooms at the middle school that are piloting a similar student data sheet. And again, NWEA is one that's on there that they can set goals for, and then action steps on how am I, what am I gonna do to meet those goals? Any questions?
The scores I haven't given to the kids yet.
No, parents will get those at parent teacher conferences.
I just want to thank the staff for their hard work and the kids for their hard work and raising these for year over year. There's some really good improvements with some of these math and reading scores. Some of them have gone up fifteen points in a year. I think that's great. We're on the right track. I'm sure not, you know, having filled it behind us and some of the interruptions that we had to deal with in previous years has helped with that. But I do need a big focus on this, and I want to thank everybody for their attention that they've been putting in this. The scores are quite immense. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board or questions? Item B on the agenda, approve their retirement of Jill Fields as Wabash Middle School's seventh grade language arts teacher effective December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Motion and a second discussion.
We are sorry to see Mrs. Fields leave, but we wish her nothing but the best in retirement. I have been working with Mr. Mattern on how we will fill this mid-year position.
All those in favor of approving the retirement indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item C, accept resignation of the following classified staff: Tiffany Flau as Fair Professional at OJ Neighbors, effective October seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Rita Scholes as RISE Fair Professional at OJ Neighbors, effective October seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Salute. Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
We'd like to thank these ladies for their service to Wabash City Schools.
All those in favor of accepting the resignations indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item D, approve leave request for Titian Lynn from December twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two to January sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Salute. Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
I recommend that the board approve this medical leave for Miss Lynn.
All those in favor of approving the leave request indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item E, approve all expense paid trip to Japan for Bill Chittenden, Wabash High School Japanese Language Teacher, and nine Wabash High School Japanese Language students, November fourteenth through twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Motion is second, discussion.
This is a great opportunity for our students to learn more about the Japanese culture. They will, not only will they visit a Japanese school, while they are there, they will also learn about the Japanese government and transportation systems, history, and more. And all of the expenses are paid for for our students. Where's the line coming from, board?
So this is a partnership from the Japan Foundation. The Council General of Japan, Chicago Office, is one of us in touch with the Japan Foundation to help bring finances to make the bill to position when we hired them a few years back. And so the Council General of Japan, Chicago Office nominated Wabash High School to be part of this program called the Takakashi Exchange, which means bridge exchange. And so it's really funded by the Japanese government, it's really where it boils down to, but it's a really elect and elite program that we've been fortunate.
All those in favor of approving the trip indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item F, approve recommendation to hire the following classified staff: Robert King as Cafeteria Delivery Driver, effective October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Bob Stanbazi as part-time custodian, Owen and Long here. At the starting custodian, paid a fourteen dollars and thirty cents effective October eleventh, twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
Motion is second, discussion.
We welcome Mr. King to Wabash City Schools, and we're thrilled to have Mr. Stanbazi, who has been taking care of our grounds on a temporary basis since he began in the school as a permanent part-time groundskeeper.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation indicate by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approve the following for athletics for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. There's a long list of coaches and the sports that they are listed under. I would accept a motion to approve all. I would accept a motion to approve all as one.
Second.
Motion and a second discussion.
This list represents many of our winter athletic coaches and some volunteers. It also includes some of our fall coaching assignments. Mr. Wood recently realized that he had inadvertently missed getting some of these coaches on the board agenda for approval.
All those in favor of approving the recommendation, you can by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item H, approve recommendation to adopt the following to 2023 bus replacement plan and 2023 capital projects plan.
Second.
Motion and second discussion.
These are the things that we had the hearing over a couple of weeks ago, and of course, nothing's changed, and no one came to our office to ask about it. So we've had no comments on it. Pretty basic on both things, bus replacement and capital project.
Any questions from the board? Not all those in favor of approving recommendations to adopt the plans, you can by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Items from superintendent.
First, I want to congratulate our boys cross-country team for winning sectionals. They advanced to the regionals as a team. Our girls team had four ladies that advanced to regionals next week as well. We wish all of these runners the best of luck next Saturday. I also want to congratulate our girls soccer team on making it to the sectional finals. They ended the season with a 1-0 loss against Eastbrook in the sectional championship. Last Friday, I got to attend the Walk Into My Future event that was held at Manchester University as for our second and third graders. The weather was a little chilly, but the various activities that were provided kept our kids very busy, and we didn't have to fight the bees like we did last year, so it was much better. This event is part of the promise Indiana Wabash County that encourages families to begin saving for college by opening a 529 account. In partnership with Wabash Community Foundation, our families and students can earn an early award scholarship of up to $1,000 while they're in elementary and middle school. So we encourage our families to learn more about this program if they have not already signed up. They can call the YMCA, they can call the community foundation, or they can call one of our schools to get more information. Last Friday and Saturday, there were nine of us that were trained to be group leaders for the Strengthening Families Program. This is a research-based program that helps families, parents, and children strengthen their communication skills, increase bonding, and help to improve pro-social behavior. I went through the training along with Kathy Wilson, LH principal, Beth Philippi, OJ principal, Janet Sparr, Sarah Kirkpatrick, and Erica Farmer, OJ teachers, Brody Cook, middle school teacher, and Randy and Amy LaPage, middle school counselors. And after we completed the training, we did some brainstorming and have decided that we will offer our first Strengthening Families program right after winter break. So between now and then, we've got some planning to do to make sure we have everything lined up. We're going to offer it to six families that we will select and offer it. We think this will be a really good opportunity for our families. Once we've done it once, we'll be able to offer it to more than just six. We just feel like our first time, we need to make sure that it's manageable. And then finally, I want to remind parents that we have parent teacher conferences on Thursday this week. They are 8:30 to 7:30 in all buildings. Kindergarten through sixth grade conferences are scheduled, and seventh through 12th grade conferences are drop-in style, so parents can just drop in at their convenience. We do want to let families know that between 11:00 and noon and 5:00 and 6:00, middle school and high school teachers will be doing lunch breaks. So only half of the teachers will be available during the first 30 minutes and the second 30 minutes of that hour. So we hope to see a lot of our families out for parent teacher conferences. And because we have parent teacher conferences on that day, there is no school for students, and there is no e-learning.
Any questions for Dr. Sibley? Not items from chief business officer.
The only thing I have is that next board meeting for us, I will not be here because I'll be at city council, and that's the night that they adopt our school budget. So on the 24th, I'll be at city council getting our budget adopted. And then it's all in the hands of the DLGA. So far so good.
Questions for Mr. Stell? Items from administrators? Items from visitors? Items from board members? Kristen?
Congratulations for girls golf team. That's really great. I am slightly excited, though, because Aubrey's one of my babysitters, and now she won't be so involved in golf. She's always golfing every time I try to reach her. Also, I want to thank Student Health, our company, and giving us an update. I always love those. And thank Manchester University for the Walk Into My Future. My son loved that, and so it was so much fun, so.
Steven?
I want to thank the board members for going in here last week for the IASSBA conference. We were very busy with your work, so. But I know it takes time and effort to draw us together, so thank you for putting in the time. That was Matt and Amy as well, thank you. And Al Hartland, we'll have more stuff next week, department. Nice to meet you.
The group leaders, they're going to take your time out of their weekends, thank you. They appreciate you guys doing that. I'm excited to see what comes out of this program. I think it's going to be, we do it to our abilities, I think it'll be awesome. It'll really give a lot of things, a lot of help, so that's awesome. Oh, yeah, thank you as well to the board going to the board conference. It was awesome, I think, overall. Got a couple of things roaming around the top of my head. I'd like to see what's been considered moving forward on. I'm not exactly sure with that, we have still in the process. Too busy to have too much time to process it. Other than that, hopefully have some energy coming to our teachers for all day events and teacher, parent, parent teacher conferences and stuff. And also, I do want to thank you for giving us that information with NWEA. That was really, really good. It was a wild process, and you really loved it, paid out first to this.
I too would like to congratulate the girls golf team on being regional qualifiers to have basically a team of freshmen and sophomores. That's exciting for the next few years. So we expect to hear big things from that team.
We wanted to win sectionals this year, and when we did, we set ourselves up.
That's right. That's great.
Get a lot of good work in.
To get that far with such a young team, that's awesome.
Golf goes under the radar. Tyler Olson added the sectional champion. Like first year, we had any cold go. Last year, we qualified in the game. This year, we felt like we had a shot to win sectionals and got beat by a team that, you know, that just went off on a good day. So we left sectionals a little bit, but see what makes you win, so.
Boys cross-country team for winning sectional this past weekend. I don't think they were the favorite team going in. It sounds like they beat at the right time, so congratulations to Mr. Evans and everybody on that team, and good luck this coming weekend regionals. And then I too would like to thank the board for attending the IASSBA Fall Conference. I wasn't able to attend this year, but in the five years that I've been on the board, I think we've either had four or all five members of our board attend that conference every year. And that just speaks to the engagement of this board. And I really appreciate everybody taking time out of their schedule to go. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend this year for work-related conflict, but everybody else made it, and there are a lot of school boards across the state that have no representation at all. So thank you to everybody for taking time out for attending. Really appreciate it. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Your adjournment, thanks, everyone.
Everybody roll eyes or that. And then Steven needs to also sign. You got to sign.